This is regular media of Page County School Board.
Mr. Everfelt.
Yes.
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 Please pause for a minute of silence as we prepare for the meeting. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Fox, do you have any agenda changes or additions?
I do have one this evening. Under action items, we're going to add 8.06 of the goal personnel action.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alger and a second by Mr. Everfelt to approve the agenda as amended.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
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 Madam Chairman, I'd like to certify that Personnel Matters discussed in closed session were in conjunction with the Section 2.2-3711A1.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan-Smoot and a second by Ms. Alger to certify Personnel Matters discussed in closed session.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. I have a motion to...
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Everfelt and a second by Ms. Sullivan-Smoot to open the public hearing to prevent a search.
It's run.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yes. Have a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Everfelt and a second by Ms. Alger to close the public hearing.
Mr. Everfelt?
Yes.
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 Yes. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alger and a second by Ms. Sullivan-Smoot to approve the consent agenda.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Great. Informational items, the minutes from February are posted for review. If there's any changes, let us know. And then, Mr. Bush, you are up with the student member update.
All right, this is what all's been happening at Page County High School for this month and last month. We hosted the Lucky to Have You Dance. That was done by our PTA and they did a phenomenal job. They had, I mean, they were baking up a storm. It was so many good, like cupcakes and like little treats and stuff out for students that came to that. They decorated really nice. DJ Chuck did the music. He did a really good job. Prom planning and decorating is in full swing. Rio Carnival is the theme. And, I mean, they've been busy with it as always. At Mamma Mia's coming up, they're gonna have a Spirit Night where if you mention Page County High School Spirit Night, they will donate 10% from every meal back to our prom funds. Believe that's the percentage. I'm not 100% sure on that. They had a really successful musical. And the, uh, they're going through some student scheduling and PCTC students visited and shared their programs with younger students. Athletics have been really busy, even though we've had so much snow and all. I mean, athletics has managed to fill up a whole slide, which I think is impressive considering the rest of them. Spring sports are starting up. Wrestling states, Jordan Hedrick, Michael Shiftlet, Kaylee Campbell, and Kayla Pence and Mackenzie Painter all made it. Indoor track states, Braxton Pettit, Asher Kite, Aaron Hensley and Jackson Staples made it. Ally Purdom was first team all district and all region. Kayden Combs and Isaac Foltz were first team all districts and Kayden Combs is first team all region. Elliott Montana and Joey Miller placed in the Scholastic Bowl District Tournament. FFA, Federal Public Speaking Contest. We had sent people for extra, expertaneous, prepared and creed. Livestock, we competed at the Corey Childs Memorial Stockman's Contest. This weekend, we're going to Block &amp; Bridle in Blacksburg. Area Rally Contest is coming up and we're practicing for that. We went to the State Stockman's Contest. We have the MC Stockman's Contest coming up. And we just got our strawberries back and passed out to people who ordered them. Our FFA Week was really good this year. A lot of people participated. We had a bowling night, which members love. And everybody's working on their applications for state degrees. And I also have steak dinner tickets here. And any of y'all that want to buy these, they're $30 and just talk to me after the meeting.
When is the steak dinner?
Uh, the steak dinner is May 10th. That is a Saturday and it is from 4 o'clock to 8 o'clock. And it's gonna be some real good steak down there, Mr. Everfelt. All right.
Well, you know, I like to eat, so.
Oh, everybody loves to eat, I think. I mean, especially when it's that food down there. I mean, you could be coming up the road three miles away and you're gonna smell those baked potatoes down there. All right. FCCLA, their theme this year was Dare to Dream and they've been doing different things focused around that theme. They had a pop-up sweet shop for Valentine's Day where it was little sweets and valentines you could send to people. And they're preparing for their National Leadership Conference in Orlando. TSA sold fudge and is looking for other ways of fundraising for their club projects. FCS watched and analyzed The Case for Christ and The Lee Struble Story. They broke that up over lunch several days this week and they were analyzing it, taking notes, from what I understand. FBLA celebrated FBLA Week and they're prepared for their end of year to earn their gold chapter. And I think that's it. All right, is there any questions from anybody?
Is there a date for the Spirit Night at Mamma Mia's?
I will let you know after the meeting. I will have to double check on that, but I will let you know. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add, a lot of these slides are a little empty, but we have unfortunately missed a lot of times and that's taken a lot from our clubs. But I think as it's getting warmer, we're getting more activities going and I think we're gonna go full throttle till summer.
You're still doing a lot.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hopkins, attendance update?
Good evening, everyone. This month's attendance update, if you'll. You can see that we are all well in the 90s. Everyone's continued to do very well. Various things at each school, every school's doing something different to improve their attendance, but they are holding their own even with the many days we missed and people being sick. So there's a nice bar graph, but I thought this graph here was even nicer. Sort of gives you that look that everybody is right there and they're holding very steady. So we've got one school that we're sort of watching right now that's starting to dip, but they did that before due to sickness, but they got straight back up. So we're doing good. They're doing good. It's all their hard work and the things that their staff and their principals and their special teams are doing. And then, of course, our Y. And it's all because of the kids. Thank you for continued support.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Seepers, monthly financials?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. You have been provided with the monthly financials for February. For the operating expenditures and revenue were $3,953,926.72 along with that, you have the local match calculation that we did balance with. Any questions? I'll be my best to answer those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, even resources and business operations update?
Yes, good evening, members of the school board. Tonight, I'd like to cover three topics, just updates with you. The first is the update on our Grow Your Own program. And you hear me talk about that from time to time. This has been an exciting week. We were afforded seven more opportunities for employees to enroll with either Laurel Ridge or JMU on route to a teaching license. I thought it would be helpful to give you some numbers on this. We had have nine employees that have been in the program since 2003. So we're tracking that to see who's going to be ready when in regard to employability with a teaching license. Only two of them are at JMU and nearing the end. Most of those nine are still on the front end for first two years or so of teacher licensure. But then we were notified that we had seven more slots last month. And so we advertised that division-wide to all employees. Of those seven slots, five, and this is all funded by JMU. They won a large grant some years ago. So all those seven slots, five were slots specific to Laurel Ridge. So that if you did not have an associate's degree upon application, you went straight to Laurel Ridge. And then upon getting your associate, you transfer to JMU. Two of those were specific to starting at JMU. So those two folks had to possess an associate's degree already. So that gave us the seven. We had 16 apply and we're really pleased with that. And on the right there, you can see we have a strong enrollment process. We advertise it. I attend informational meeting with two ladies, one from JMU, one from Laurel Ridge, in which it's informational question and answer. And then we, then we launch an application, online application, that if people are interested, they have to apply. And, uh, and with that, we're asking them about their, about the why. Why do you want to get into teaching? We ask them a little bit about their, about their story, their journey with Page County Public Schools. There's a writing sample that we're able to collect because we certainly don't want anybody to jump into Laurel Ridge or JMU and, you know, and it sounds really good. Make sure people are ready and able to do college work. And then the principals weigh in. We ask for references, what performance, attendance, those kinds of things. Again, to make sure that, that our very best are representing us and preparing to be teachers because part of this program, you have to return to Page County Public Schools. And if you don't, then you are, you're gonna be in debt to Laurel Ridge and JMU for the coursework that you got. So that's, that's the situation there. The chat, one of the challenges when you have 16 applicants is, is obviously many of them don't necessarily have the associate's degree. So of 16, you know, we, we could have 14 vying for the five slots and maybe only one or two with an associate's degree or none with an associate's degree possibly. That worries me because the last thing I want to do is leave one of those JMU slots on the table. But if you don't have an associate's degree, you're not eligible. I'll explain that on the left side there. We work really hard at maintaining balance. These folks can major in early childhood, it's a SPED program. They can major in elementary ed and then general special education. So we also, we don't want to get out of balance. When they're finishing up, we're hoping to have some special educators, some elementary educators and some early childhood educators. We try to balance it. We try to keep the home schools as balanced as we can. Again, you're at the mercy of who applies. So for instance, you'll notice on there that we don't have anybody representing Page Middle currently, but we've not had applicants from Page Middle to fill those slots. And so, you know, we're doing our best to keep those balanced. So on the left there, I gave you a breakdown and you can see we actually total have five at JMU. And so if you look at, say, Shenandoah is a good example, that's, they've got the most enrolled. But part of that is because two of their folks will qualify for JMU, whereas, you know, we might look at Lray Middle, for example, and maybe nobody with associate, with an associate's apply. So we're working hard to maintain balance to be fair, but, and we maintain those that were not selected in this round. We maintain their names and contact and I'll go back to them the next time Laurel Ridge and JMU open this up and say, hey, are you still interested? It's opened up again and we'll try to, try to keep them interested and connected. So I thought you might be interested in that. Of course, we have the two students that graduated. Talked about them before, that are at JMU as undergrad students. And there'll be, there'll be at least one selected again this spring. That process is between JMU and the school guidance offices in exactly the same way that other scholarship opportunities are. The school guidance department's advertised that, full tuition, JMU, four years. It's a great opportunity. And students can apply and, uh, and then JMU and the schools, school counseling offices work to select, select those folks. It's an incredible opportunity when you think about the, the cost associated with this and the guarantee of a, of a teaching career when you come out. It's amazing. It's a gift for sure. If anyone had questions on that before I move on, I'm gonna do three completely different topics tonight.
You said homeschool, right? So there's no homeschool up there or not?
No. When I say homeschool, what I mean by that is if you work for Lray Elementary versus if you work for Shenandoah, we're trying to maintain balance across the schools. Yeah. Thanks for saying that. If anything wasn't clear, yeah.
But could a homeschool student?
Well, these are employees.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I'm thinking about, I guess I'm thinking about the Laurel Ridge program.
Yeah, different program. Yeah, yeah. I wanted to talk to you about contracts and you may recall that I went through the contract types a year ago, but I'll do it again as a refresher. And then the next slide talks about, about what's coming up, how this ties to budget. If you recall, we have, we have a number of different contract types. The first two, annual and continuing are teacher contracts. And these are driven by the Code of Virginia, state law. So a teacher or administrator in their first three years of the profession are on an annual contract. An annual contract means it's renewed each year or not. The supervisor, the principal, a big part of this is the summative evaluation to make sure that we have strong performing teachers. And when you're on annual contract, you're not guaranteed a contract for next year. Now, obviously, in a, in a climate with teacher shortage, we're working really hard, if somebody is struggling, to bring them up, to assist them, support them so that they are back next year. The last thing we want to do is, is to be losing people. But, so annual contract, continuing contracts by Code of Virginia. If you're a teacher or administrator and you've been three years and you're moving to number four, a division is required to offer a continuing contract. And so again, if there's any question on performance, the supervisor is responsible for tackling that in the first three years. When they get to end of year three, going into their fourth, then they would receive a continuing. That doesn't mean that you're guaranteed the job from year to year. But what it does mean is if you're gonna, if you're gonna not offer someone a continuing contract legally, you've got to have a real solid case as to why you're not offering them. So it could be what's called a reduction in force tied to budget, or it could be performance. But performance, the principal's gotta demonstrated or the supervisor's gotta demonstrated that they've really worked hard to support that person, to help them improve. And, and if it's still not satisfactory, then it is possible to not, to not, you know, continue a contract from year to year. Those, those two classifieds, non-exempt, they are, they are allowed to do overtime, but typically they're your alley employees. This is all by Fair Labor Standard Law. Secretary, your custodian, your maintenance, your assistants. Those are called classified contracts. Your drivers are separate driving contracts. Nutritional services, yet another contract we offer. And you can see we offer three, five, six and eight-hour positions in the nutritional services department. Of course, our coaches and then our contracted services are folks that are not benefited. They're doing a specialty service. It could be something as simple as the mowing crew. It could be something as complex as a speech teacher that's maybe working for another vendor or professional that we're paying them to give us X number of days a year. They don't get benefits. They're not on our health, health insurance, those kinds of things. But these are the contracts when we talk about, on the next slide, I'm gonna share with you our plan for the spring. But all of these contracts play into that discussion. Lots of different laws, lots of different scenarios on switching from one to another. Can you get overtime? Can you not? Those kinds of things. I gave you the current year counts, 24, 25. Thought it was interesting. When I go into our talent ed program, which is how we issue the contracts electronically, this year we issued the talent ed 73, annual and 231 continuing. So, so you can see just over 300 of those combined. 159 more classified employees, 58 drivers, 30 nutritional services and 70 coaches. And those are our paid head coach, assistant coach. That's not getting into our volunteers. And then there's another 30, give or take. We're in this place right now when we hire a new teacher who hasn't joined us yet in the spring. They get a paper contract. So if somebody was on the agenda tonight that you approved, then Marina Combs will process that tomorrow and then early next week, we'll put together a paper contract, get that to them, get it signed so they know they've legally got the promise of the job for next year. But they don't have a talent ed account yet. So we can't put them in a talent ed system and, and do it that way. So that, those counts are counted separately. When we think about budget season now and we start thinking about those types of contracts, what are the things that we consider as we think about how many at a school? Our instructional team are currently working on teacher ratios at every school. And so I saw the first part of that work this week where we know exactly how many students in an elementary grade level at a specific school and how many teachers. So are we 15 to one in a third grade at a given school? Are we 18 to one? Of course, that ebbs and flows, you know, as large pockets of students move to an elementary. Or sometimes you'll have a small group at a given grade level and they flow through. So we checked out every single year and each grade, every, every content as well. So when you get into middle and high, we look at, we look at every teacher's name. And are they teaching science classes? How many do they have in a biology class? How many have enough science class? So we, the instructional team provides that to us as we're, as we're sorting out, what are we gonna do? Obviously, for the, for the sake of the employee, we like continuity. We like consistency. It's helpful if we can leave somebody, if you're a third grade teacher at a given school and that's what you want to do, the goal is to let you stay in that position. On occasion, you might have a, a large or small enrollment-wise pocket move through. And you may have to ask a teacher to go with the grade level or jump to him because, you know, you might have, just an example, you might have 30 at Springfield, which would be 15 to one, two teachers. And then the grade level behind, maybe they've only got, it's unusual, unusual example, but maybe they've only got 19 or 20 in the grade level behind. So we wouldn't split that between two teachers. We would then say, okay, what are we gonna do to balance this out? Do we need someone to go to fourth grade or fifth grade for a year, that kind of thing? So all of that plays into this budget time of year to make sure that we're not heavy, that we're effective in our, in our budget planning. Of course, the other thing that drives this, a lot of this conversation of where a program's located. As you know, we might have a, we have certain special education programs, say at Lray Elementary or Lray Middle, and then others at Page Middle, for instance, or Shenandoah Elementary. So depending on, on the student situation, they might live in the Shenandoah District and attend the Lray end because that's where the program is housed. So that would be where a teacher or an aide is assigned, given on where the programs are. And then the funding restrictions, if you recall, a few weeks ago, Mr. Hopkins took you through the Title I example where Title I numbers drive what we can place employee-wise at given schools. So you, you might see, you know, we talked about some examples where, you know, one school may have a veteran teacher of 25 years. And so Mr. Hopkins' Title I numbers, and you can correct me if I get this wrong, Mr. Hopkins, but his Title I numbers, funding is, is attached to or allocated to schools. So do we, do we have a 25-year teacher veteran at $70,000? When you think about their credentials and their benefits and their insurance? Or do we have X number of teacher assistants who are Title I-specific? So, you know, the instructional team have to balance the need of the school through Title I and through the restrictions that, that are, you know, that are placed. You can't over-serve a school. You can't underserve a school. You have to make those dollars work at a given school. And the same is true with special education. That is driven with, by IEPs and programs that are housed. So ultimately, we try to make sure that we assign these contracts driven by student need, class sizes, program needs and, and the requirements that are upon us. So we don't, you know, Dr. Fox and I were talking about this the other day. And we thought, as we get into budget season, as we get into decision time, it's a good reminder to remember, you know, it's not as simple as we'd love to have that person at that school. Lots of things in the decision-making that, you know, that we have to adhere to. Just so you know, right now, the tentative plan and hope, as long as the budget process goes well, is that we would like to issue contracts for our employees on Tuesday, May 27th. And this aligns with last year's Tom Green. And we would like to have those due back to us by Monday, June 2nd in the talent ed accounts. That would allow us, employees to know they've got that signed contract in hand before the school year is finished and they're off to summer jobs and southern travel and so on.
So Dr. Johnson, if I may, just, and I think it was talked last week, pardon me if I forgot, but what is the state recommend, recommend ratio and what is our for ratio of student to teacher?
Well, it depends on the grade.
Just very general, I know.
Yeah, because it depends on the grade level. We put certain funding for early grade. Student teacher ratio is, is 18 to one. Thank you. Yeah. So that's, that's what, K to 3, 18 to one.
I get the high school level, if I can jump in. The high school level, English across the board, 1 to 24. Science, 1 to 24. At the tech center, you're gonna have those different classes based on safety. Might be like 1 to 15.
Right.
So it's, it's different across the board for different age levels.
When you heard that, when you hear that term SOQ, that's exactly.
Right.
Exactly what we're talking about is, is the standards of quality and, and again, it's, there's so many guidelines based upon content, based upon grade level. Is it a, is it a welding class or is it a PE class? And yeah, it's, it's not a, it's clearly not a one, one answer for that.
So we're balancing between the state requirements and the actual quality of our education. So from what I've seen at the schools, when we have a 1 to 24 or 1 to 19, like for example, Lray Elementary, that's pretty good.
It is good.
And I know that we've got a couple of pre-K, I think, that are like 12 to one or something. It's kindergarten. Kindergarten?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, kindergarten. Pre-K is typically 18, 19, 20 is the highest, Mr. Fox.
But that, that really improves the quality of our kids' education here. So that's, that should drive, that should drive people to want to come to Page.
And I, I think an important piece, sorry to interrupt you, with this is tied to that SOQ. No school division in the state is only staffing based on SOQ. There's no way you could run a school division on what they've put in as SOQ. You have to locally fund those extra positions. And that's, that's why we have to keep going back to the board of supervisors. You'll see the budget says, we're gonna give you funding for SOQ positions. That might be your counselors at a 1 to 350 ratio. We know that that's not feasible or good for kids, so we staff it under a 1 to 350 ratio. So yes, that takes additional local funds to make that happen.
We're also balancing the increase in the teacher shortage.
We're also balancing the increase in the teacher shortage, but also an increased student need. So sometimes the need of a student is equal to one, two, sometimes three students. So you have to balance.
Absolutely.
I talked to a counselor today and she has 20 students on average that she deals with. 20 in a day. I found that to be incredible. I mean, I take my hat off to her because she loves kids. But if she, I mean, it's, that's above and beyond. And some of them are kind of, some of them are trouble, you know?
I will tell you, the job that I've been to, this is a big sales point, if you will. We're trying to get young teachers to Page County because classroom environment is everything for a young teacher. And to be able to say, I'm teaching elementary at our schools and typically we're 17, 18 to a class. On occasion, we have that bubble where it may go over 20, but we try not to. But it's, it's, as you said, it's, the culture is definitely a big part of class sizes.
People rocking in Pittsburgh City, they have a lot more diversity than we do in the language, right? So we really should do very well on our test scores compared to those other schools. There's not as many challenges. Now, the drugs, the family situations, they make it more dicey, but those are across the board.
I think socioeconomic too.
Socioeconomic, right.
That's a struggle.
Part of all that.
Some of the specialty positions, I'm very familiar with some of the, I'll cite Rockingham as an example, their elementary schools, they have at least one EL teacher in every school, reading specialist in every school. And so you're, you know, you're in your first three years, you're on the annual contract and you're still learning, but you've got these professional specialists pushing in. It's huge. And so again, as we talk budget and if we have reading specialists, you know, it's cool reading specialist.
That's the, that's the challenge for us and our directors, how do you get resources to do that?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially after what we've experienced.
The final, everybody's good with that. The final thing, this is, this is now I'm going to jump into safety and operations world. Something we talk about, but I'm not sure I've ever presented it to you all. So I thought it would be interesting to do. Our principals and folks in my department often spend quite a lot of time with our surveillance systems. And I'm not sure I ever really talked to you all about just what that looks like and just how many we have. And so we have 400, currently, 430 building cameras. And that does not include cameras on the buses. Our buses have them as well. But in the buildings itself, we have 430 cameras that are fully installed. Many upgrades have occurred recently. These have pretty much completely been funded by our annual school safety grants that we get. We apply every year for school safety money. And, you know, it hasn't been that many years that we had schools without cameras or we had schools with a handful of cameras. And so I thought it would be interesting for you all to see today just how many we have and principals are keeping up with them. Dr. Fox and I are on them a lot, supporting the principals. These things are high end, the Zoom. I can Zoom, snapshot, grab a photo, capture a recording. Some of us can go on our phones and pull up a camera, any camera, those 430 at a push of a button in the app. But they are, they are, they have become a big part of our lives in education. And so I thought you might be interested in just recognizing how many we have and what are we using them for? It's an interesting component. I think when we first put them in there, we all, we all knew the first two bullets were the answer. Of course, safety response. We can see our hallways, we can see our common spaces. Our SROs do a wonderful job of walking the properties. If they notice blockage, foliage growing, that kind of thing, we're staying on top of that, keeping it down. Building alarm, this is a tremendous asset for principals. Often alarms go off in the middle of the night, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the morning, and the security company, the first call is to the principal. And, you know, in the old days, when you woke up, you had to get in your vehicle and get there, and you didn't know what you were going to. Today, they can open their app and they can quickly see it was door number such and such, and they can look at that camera and there was a bird in the building. So, you know, sometimes it's something that simple. Sometimes it's not. But they are a tremendous asset to get a quick view of any area of concern. Of course, they're an asset if there's a security concern. Heaven forbid ever that, that somebody came into the building that shouldn't be. We literally can follow somebody from one corner of the building to another down hallways simply by switching cameras as somebody were to walk. If you asked me to do that, if you said, hey, I'm going to go to Page County High School, I'm going to go in this door and I'm going to go out that door, I could, I could literally follow you just flipping from camera to camera. We have phenomenal coverage that's really positive. We use them today, unfortunately, because it takes a lot of time. It's helpful, but we use them today to review complaints and behavior allegations. They have been wonderful at times. If something goes on in the hallway or in the cafeteria or in the gym and we get a complaint, maybe someone says a staff member reacted in a way they weren't pleased, and we can pull it up and we can look at it. And we have this footage for, it lasts a long time, so we have time typically to be able to see it. Again, supporting law enforcement investigations as well. Dr. Fox and I have been known to log on and see what the roads look like in Shenandoah because we've got the front cameras on the outside, what are our parking lots look like? You know, we never dreamed it, how helpful that would be, but it's wonderful to be able at 5:00 AM to be able to say, is it laying in Raleighville? You know, what's going on there? I put a little piece about legal considerations because I get asked this all the time. You know, parents, can I see it? Can I have it? What's going on? And the answer to that is, in order for, we typically, the answer's typically no. We don't share it. We can't give a doubt unless it's legally considered part of a student record. And there's all kinds of legal nuances that determine, is that so or is that not so? Typically, that is not so. If it's a general gathering at lunch and it's just running and we can see all the kids at lunch, that's not part of a single student's record. There are some very unusual situations when it could be considered part of a student record. So that's one legal consideration that I've had many conversations with our attorneys on. Second one are the images recording general space as opposed to targeted locations. Our cameras record general spaces, fields, auditoriums, cafeterias, hallways. When you start thinking about, I'm going to put it in this very specific place, we always get asked about classrooms or instructional spaces. And it's clearly attorney driven because you've got to guard against somebody saying, you targeted me. Put that camera up only to watch me. It's not a general space. Lots of legal speak involved in that, but it's an interesting conversation. And then again, if we ever share it, it has to be redacted. Mr. Samples and I have worked a few times on those situations. But then you're getting into, if I have a clipping of the school cafeteria and there's some legal ramification that we have to produce it, I've got to redact, Mr. Samples, redacts how many hundred faces because you can't give that out. So this has become a big part of school administrators' life, and I knew that I hadn't really talked much about it. And so I thought you might enjoy just seeing how many we have and what, what kind of goes into that, those conversations.
So a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
Is there, is there an expansion plan to go beyond our current 430?
So what we do, yes, each year, the principals, each year we, we apply for the school safety grant, and that's the funding stream that we've been using. And each year, we ask our principals to give input. Is there a place in your building that you can't see that you know you need to see or would like to see? And, and we're often asking, and then when we get that security grant, when we get the grant, we get it each year. We don't get it for the same schools every year. So if we got it for four schools last year, this year we'll likely get it for three or four different schools. And so, which is a pretty good pace because if you think about, we really couldn't keep pace with that many trying to upgrade all, you know, 10 buildings or whatever every year. But yes, but I will tell you, if you talk to your principals, I think they're going to tell you that there are very few areas anymore that we can't see.
So I find it interesting though, that the people who are giving us the grant are dictating where we need to put the cameras because we're the people who know where they need to go.
Yeah, yeah.
That's part of the application process?
It is, and we write, we make recommendations. Yeah, we make recommendations, but often we've made recommendations for six or eight schools and gotten money for three or four. So, you know.
More, right?
We always ask, yeah.
That grant is also what was most recently used for our badge process. So it's not just cameras and school security. So we can use it for that. The Aphones that are outside some of the schools where they can see that before not letting someone in. So it's used for, it's been used for a lot of great safety features at our building.
So my second question, or my second point actually, is there's still a lot of discussion, not necessarily in this board or other boards, of putting cameras in classrooms.
Yes.
So we've got to, we have to think about that. We have to be able to address that.
Yep. I was asked that today by a parent. So yeah, that is a common conversation. And one that if we ever went that direction, I think you'd be really well served to make sure it's attorney driven because that's when they get into that targeting, not only a student, but even an employee. You know, the students come and go, but the employees are in that same space all day long. And so, you know, did you do that to whatever? You know, a lot of, a lot of conversation behind that.
But I think it's worthwhile to prepare for that.
Sure.
Have a good, solid answer.
It's a day and age.
It's a budget thing too. You know, we're talking about a substantial number of cameras and not only that, but the servers and the equipment to run it. So if that's a conversation you all want to have with the boys.
Yeah. So if it was going to be mandated or somebody really, really wanted that, then they, they were willing to fund it.
That's different. Funded mandate.
We don't get any of that.
Unfunded mandates these days.
Yeah. So, but it would have to be on a rotation like Dr. Johnson was saying, the schools. When we apply for that grant, we put all of the schools on that of what we need, what are, what are we looking to do? Is it camera upgrades? Is it the Aphones? Was it badges? Is it replacement of certain things, doors? But they usually won't come back for the buck.
Yeah. We can't, we can't kid ourselves. I mean, protection of our schools and kids today is, is paramount.
Yes. Yep. No question.
I have a question, somewhat of a tangent, but it's relevant. So with the bus cameras, is it still just the camera in the front? Are there also cameras in the back?
Depends on the age of the bus. Yeah, the new buses are coming equipped, you know, in the build phase, front, middle and rear. Yeah, they're much, much nicer than the older buses.
We're excited. We're excited for new buses.
When I talk to a couple of the bus drivers, they're like, yeah, I wish I had a camera in the back of the bus. Because that's where, that's where a lot of the little stuff goes on and I can't see it.
A lot of times, students, they'll duck because the seats are tall and the newer buses, you catch them from behind as well.
I agree.
Yeah.
What percentage of our buses?
All of them. So, so all of the route buses. So I'm not necessarily talking about your, you know, so for instance, some of our school activity buses or some of our vans that do sports trips and other student trips, but our daily route buses all have cameras.
So even some of the. Stuff on families as well, and it's audio and video that you can hear.
Is that the end of your question? I got a couple of questions. I want to pick on you. We're back, I think, slide. I want to say next question. They're back. On the annual continuing, you talked about renewing all those things. So if you're a new, if you're early annual and you're underperforming, how does that, is there a performance improvement plan?
There absolutely is. Dr. Huber and I work with whatever principal, and then typically it's going to be Ms. Marston or Mr. Runyon. So we will get together as it, it begins with the principal and the employee, you know, with the post-observation, I, you know, I saw this or, or special education, you've missed some timelines, those kinds of things. But if it's not remedied quickly, then the principal will reach out either HR or instruction. And we always come at it together. We think that the principal, we want to help the principal help the employee. Performance improvement plan is the technical name. And I always say, it is 100% about improving, not a method to get rid of somebody. Unfortunately, there are rare instances where we'll put a performance improvement plan in place and the improvement isn't there. And it sometimes can be at an unacceptable place in which that can be the end and they don't get a contract the following year. But we really work hard to help somebody improve and get better and succeed, not, not get rid of them.
And I know every young, every teacher is going to get a classroom observation, but are there metrics that are used, like the testing scores, their attendance?
Yes.
You know?
So.
A lot of that stuff's opinionary.
It's a great question, and I think the answer would be yes and no, say the scores. Because sometimes that can have them flow with the student population. We would obviously coming out of the pandemic that. Yes. Yeah, yeah.
And their, their evaluation is the state evaluation tool. So there's seven or eight now, eight categories, things like professionalism, instruction, What are the other ones? I can't, all eight, but so under each of those are indicators. So they're evaluated on each of those pieces. So it does play into, and they can bring artifacts or pieces of evidence and say, I met this particular category and here's how I did it.
So is that a state approved?
Yeah, they make the evaluation tool. The school divisions use it.
School, do we add things to ours? Or is it just within the nuance of?
It's in the nuance of it.
But if you switch school divisions in Virginia, you're going to see the same end of your stomach of a valuation tool because it's a.
Big shift.
Yeah, and we, we look at, you know, long range, you know, one year we see a dip in scores or, and maybe the principal says, I saw that in the lesson, so we do have a problem. And they begin to work at it. But two years in a row, I mean, we don't ever, and I preach this to our principals, there should never be surprises. We should never get to February or March of year three, and then we're talking about non-renewing a teacher because we should have known that year one, maybe year two. To me, you, I feel like year one is, is very critical that we put all of our resources into the improvement process. And I'm, I tend to lean on the side of year two, let, you know, unless it's catastrophic and we're just, we just can't live with it. But if we're seeing some improvement, I'd love to see them get to year two, but I don't like to see them get to year three if we're not seeing any improvement. So we've got plenty of time.
So when we go through those things and we, some directors you guys can do this, do we go and send them to other schools that are performing well? And how do you determine that is that, because not every school is going to have the same demographic type thing that we would as a rural area?
I think I'll chime in and then you guys can. I mean, it's specific to what the need is. So if we have a school here that could, like a teacher might need some extra support near classroom mandarin. We know we have great teachers with classroom mandarin, so we might either send them to one in their school or maybe to another elementary school in the division because it's the same grade level or that teacher has a style that might be similar.
So we don't send anybody outside of our.
We have before sometimes, yeah. But I think we have enough qualified, great staff here to serve as examples. We use our own staff.
And we've had people come to us as well, just the opposite. We've had folks from outside of the division see that such and such a teacher's scores are through the roof every year. How are you doing it? And they'll come, they'll come watch and observe, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. So I think I learned today, like first year teachers, they're like, they have to be observed at least what, three times in their classroom? And then as they progress and get better, they only have to be observed maybe once or twice?
Yeah.
By the principal.
Yeah, yeah. And they all, they all have a mentor, in the building mentor. We have a mentorship program. So a lot goes into that. It's more so than ever because we cannot afford not to. We have to grow these teachers.
Visiting schools are pretty educational. Well, it's just amazing how different they are.
I know.
I mean, you go to Springfield, it's almost like a library. You go to LAS, your ears are ringing by the time you walk down. It's just so, it's so loud, a lot of kids. Just interesting how they all. On offering contracts to new teachers, do you have, how does that process work? Do you do a verbal offer to them with salary and?
So yeah, so, so what happens is for teachers, the principal interviews at the school level, and then they'll, they'll submit a hiring request that comes through Talent Ed. That's, that then ends up on the agenda that you all see at your board meetings. In the meantime, I, I or Ms. Koma will review their resume. In the meantime, I, I or Ms. Comer will review their resume and their, and their history. And we've got the pay scales, so it's pretty black and white. If you've got a master's degree and you've been teaching 10 years, I look at step 10 on the master's scale. You know, two years on a bachelor's degree, I look at step two on the bachelor's. And, and we make sure we mark, I always print the resume. I always write whatever, if we have a phone conversation, you're considering us. I write down exactly what was said. On the resume, I mark the resume. There's one year there and two years there, and that goes in your file. And that way, three years from now, when I could never tell you what I said, I can pull it and it's there.
Okay. And, and when you have, do you have everybody come back and say, I want more money?
We do.
Okay. They negotiate with you?
Yeah.
We don't negotiate.
It's really no negotiating. I've had.
Really no negotiating.
I've had instances where somebody came and said, you know, when I was hired, this should have, or that should have. But honestly, Dr. Fox, and I've talked about this a number of times, you know, that we, we do look back. If you say, will you look back and see if there was a mistake made? Absolutely, we will. But typically, you agree to that starting contract. You came here from wherever, you had whatever experience, whoever the HR director was, myself, Mr. Moran, Mr. Smith back in the day. You know, they worked with you on that first offer and said, this is the experience, this is what we believe you qualify for. So I struggle unless there's some genuine black and white mistake to say, oh, we should, we should change it. Because I wore you open a can of worms.
Right. So, so that's teachers. Now, would say a CFO would go take another position. And that you're interviewing for the new CFO, how does that work on both?
So you're talking about superintendent level?
Well, I know how that one works.
Yeah. So we have the same thing. We have a director's scale. And we have beyond the director, then there's the cabinet level. And then plus there's a superintendent. So, but it's all driven by that standard scale. That's exactly what I use when I do the, when I do the, the area comparisons. I pull everybody else's scales. They have exactly the same thing. And you can see a director, a supervisor, an assistant superintendent, and, and we just, they're, they're all just about, not the same monetarily, but set up the same. Education's pretty.
So you would do the same thing. You would print the resume off and document whatever conversation. Then negotiation comes back.
Yeah, you don't, there's not, I don't think there's typically negotiation. A director is usually coming from a principalship. So they're going to start on step, on the entry level for the director line. If somebody's coming in as an assistant super, chief of finance, you know, that's a cabinet level. That's, that's steps above the director. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Rock? Well, good evening, board. First, I just want to say thank you to Sebastian. You always bring us some levity. So thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to miss you, but I wish you all the best as you graduate this year, but thank you.
It's not as long as buying two tickets.
Yeah.
Well, there is a way to correct that.
I know. This evening.
Sebastian is graduating.
I just love it when you say steak dinner. It's just, it's just awesome. I love your enthusiasm, but thank you. Appreciate it. Speaking of my, my update this evening is mostly budget related because that's where we are at this time of year. So I wanted to just, the first one, I guess I'm controlling it. I need to, oh, we're sorry. So this one is just to bring a little bit of, I've been asked this a number of times over the past couple of weeks. So I figured, why not, let's get it out there and make sure we're all on the same page. So the state budget, the biennial budget does include money in FY26 for what they call school construction grants. We don't know yet exactly what those grants can be used for, but there is money there for the grants. We would then have to, those are competitive grants. You'd have to apply for them. So similar to the school security grants that are out there. We would have to put, these are the projects we want to do. We would submit our application for whatever amount they're going to set that a school division can apply for. So that process, we don't know yet when those will start. We're assuming July because they're in this grant, this budget cycle. We will apply for any and all school construction, school construction grants that come out. So just know that that's important to see the word grant in there. Because two years ago, three years ago now, Vash, we were given a school construction allocation from the Department of Ed through the budget process. We were given what, 2.8 million? That was a direct allocation to the division. We were given that money. We could spend it however we chose. They had restrictions. We had to report how we were spending it, but it was allocated money. We didn't have to apply for it to fill out a grant application. That's not what's written in the budget this time. It's fully grant money, so we have to apply for it. I wish it were allocated, but it's not. So just know that little nuance between grant and allocation and know that our, our, we're going to apply for any that come out with the budget. We're hoping they did add some extra money. The General Assembly added a little bit more. So we're hoping as that budget goes through the governor's desk, it gets approved. Because that would put more money in the pot. There's 135 school divisions across the state. People are going to apply. We hope to get some of that funding. But you can imagine 110 million is not going to go far. It's not going to fund building a new school or something.
They wouldn't even build an elementary school.
No, no. It would help us do some of these other projects though, that we do need to do around the division, things like that. It would help also pull some of that burden off of the locality.
True.
So where are we now with the budget? So on February 27th, we presented to you the proposed budget. That was based on the governor's amended budget back from December of 2024. The governor is currently reviewing that budget, the budget amendments from the General Assembly as well as new legislation. There is legislation out there that will have costs. Those costs are not funded by the, the state, so we'll have to figure all that out. The General Assembly is likely to reconvene on April 2nd. We hope to know something between now and April the 4th as to what's gotten approved, whether he has vetoed it, whether he's amended it, whether he's approved it. Our health insurance committee has met to review the renewal. You know that that's sitting at 18%. It's very high. Thank you to Mrs. Bryant and Ms. Sullivan Smoot for sitting on that committee to look at what options we have with respect to that. We'll present that information to you all as a board. You'll get to see all of that very soon. You all are reviewing those budget priorities. I sent you that email where I asked you to rank them for me. So you're continuing to, to do that for us because you know the proposed is always going to be amended and changed. We come back as we get new numbers, we now have to start filtering out the requests and the things that are on there to balance out those numbers. Ms. Seacrest, Dr. Johnson and I, we did meet with County Administrator, Mrs. Muller and Mr. Olson on Tuesday this past week. We reviewed our proposed budget with them. We went through all of the items, just like we did with you all. We reviewed the compensation and staffing requests that we're making. We talked about the updated health insurance renewal. They're aware that it's at 18%. And we discussed any FY26 requests or capital improvement funding. Because as we shared, we now have that line item in there for Fund II. That's that $2.3 million. So we worked through that with, with them and explained why it was $2.3 million. We have sent an email and invited each Board of Supervisors member to a one-on-one meeting with us where we're happy to talk through the budget. We'll invite the corresponding board member to that meeting, talk through the budget, answer any questions they have. Anything that we can help provide clarity to, we've sent that email. Have not yet had any responses to that, but I'll keep you posted because we would like you all to join us in that meeting. Our Joint Facilities Committee meeting will take place before the end of this month. I have one, one person I'm waiting on some information for, and we'll push that out. So that's Mr. Painter and Ms. Alger. So thank you all for that. Hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have that date confirmed for you all. It looks like it will be in the morning on one of those days. And then in terms of next steps, so tonight on your action items, I have two things for you. One is I'm going to ask you to approve the proposed budget. And you know that that comes with the big asterisk of there's all, there's going to be all kinds of changes to it. We're just approving it so that when we go next week to present to the Board of Supervisors, we have a, a basis for a budget to move forward with. They're aware that this is also proposed based on where we are in the budget and the governor's approval. We also are going to ask you tonight, you've been given a copy of a letter that we're going to forward to the Board of Supervisors requesting that they remove categorical funding for us. So with your approval tonight, before you leave, we'll have you sign that letter. And then when we present next week, we'll send them that letter in advance. But when we present next week, we'll also notify them that we are once again requesting that they remove categorical funding. In terms of timeline, so next Thursday, we'll go and present to the Board of Supervisors at their work session. I'll update you all on the time. Right now it's set at six. We're awaiting the governor's actions and the General Assembly to see what happens there. Once the state budget is passed, the next step then is we wait for the Department of Ed to redo the CALP tool. We've talked about that a lot. That gets sent out. Mrs. Seacrest then puts in our numbers and we see, all right, what's our state funding? We get those actual numbers. And then we put those in, we revise the budget, we bring it back to you with those numbers. We would by then also have a local allocation. Sorry, it's a big word that went. And then the last step for us, hopefully, fingers crossed, we can adopt a budget on May 8th. All of that's contingent in the work at the state level. So if they can keep pace and not move things to late April or May, we can get one approved on the 8th. If we can't, we have to approve what we have at that time and then we come back and amend again. Because by May 15th, by law, we have to have an approved budget. We also hope that it's May because then, as Dr. Johnson shared, we can get those contracts out before teachers go home for this week. So a lot to come. We'll keep you updated on the process, but we're just kind of in a waiting pattern right now, unfortunately, waiting on the state. Any questions about any of that? Just quickly, a reminder, this is out all over the division. There's flyers out in different stores and restaurants around the, the county. So thank you to the staff for making that happen. But our kindergarten registration, we're now accepting new registrations. And then we have onsite registrations on Monday, April 7th, from 10 to 6 at all of our elementary schools. That great flyers are out there, tons of information, what you need to bring, what you need to do, those kinds of things.
What do we anticipate or do we anticipate? The number is going to run through this year. Do you know? We have a guess?
I think we, yeah, 120, is it 120, somewhere in there? It's around 120. I think we, we kind of anticipate 120 is our starting number. And then we'll see, I think we're at 75, 520, something. 60? All right. 3K? Oh, yeah, yeah. So we'll keep you posted on where that lands, but still early in that process. And then just some calendar dates of note, just to keep us in, in pace. And also our, our staff and our students, a reminder that tomorrow is a full student day. It was an early release day because of all the inclement weather. We made the calendar changes. So tomorrow's a full day of school. Tonight is a lunar eclipse, so there's that. Yeah. Monday, March 17th, the superintendent's search announcement. An application packet will be released on our webpage and in our Talent Ed Power School portal. Next Thursday is that meeting with the Board of Supervisors where we'll present our budget. You all are not required to come, but you always come in support. So we appreciate anybody who might be able to join us in support. Tuesday, March 25th is our community partnership forum at Page County High School at four. We're excited. We're going to have, Collins Center is going to come and share what their work is in the community. Choices is going to share what they do. And then Y-PACA is going to bring some kids. And the kids are going to share what Y-PACA is doing in the schools. So it's going to be a really good community forum on the 27th or 25th. Thank you. Our next meeting will be on the 27th here at the central office. And then spring break is that week. And then another, just a reminder, keeping everybody looking ahead, Monday, April 7th was a student holiday. It's now a full student day. So just to keep that on everybody's radar when we come back from spring break. And that's the day of the onsite kindergarten registrations at the elementary school and parent teacher.
So questions on March 17th and the announcement to replace you? The last time we did it, when we hired you, we, I don't remember us really talking a whole lot about it as far as the progress that, as it's going or the details of it. Last time, Jason Frieden, who was our current chair, he, he ran a lot of the interview process. So you, would you like, is it okay for you to share kind of how that's working this year and kind of your involvement, just so folks kind of know?
Sure. Yeah. So at this point, it's just been all the preliminary work to, one, get the surveys together and get the surveys out. You all reviewed that data. Those closed earlier in March. So that's one piece of it, to get that community stakeholder feedback. That then aligns to what's going to be released is the announcement and the application packet. What are you all looking for in a superintendent? So you use that input and you define the characteristics of what you're looking for, the skills, the knowledge, the attributes. That will all be reflected in those application documents. So I've just helped with the surveys to get those together. They went to Mrs. Gordon and Dr. Kidd, who's helping with the search. He's running the search. He's a retired superintendent. We've got those application pieces ready. We've got the webpage. Now there's a front-facing piece. So when you log into our homepage up at the top, it says superintendent search. You click on that, it will take you to a timeline, talks about where we are in the process. All those documents are there. We've added the budget as you asked. Strategic plan is there, so anybody who's considering the position has all of that information for them. The next step for you all, I step out. I'm no longer a part of anything. You all will be accepting applications. They're going in through the Power School Talent Ed portal. So applicants will submit their application and all of the things we've asked them to attach. Dr. Kidd will see those. He will vet those. He will bring those to you all. You all decide who you want to interview. You begin first round interviews in April. You do second and third round, whatever your pleasure is. You can do four or five, whatever you all decide. Please don't do that to a candidate though. But, and then our goal is by May, early May, for you all to have selected the new superintendent. So my role at this point has just been to help get all those things up. I step out of it completely. You all now and Dr. Kidd work for that process. What we can do is I can give you a quick little update, maybe each time as to where we are in the process. I can include it in my superintendent's update.
I think it would be good because I think it's, unless Megan wants to do it, that's, that's fine. But I think it would be good to hear it.
Yeah.
But also to know that, you know, you have helped early on and you are stepping out of it because you really don't want to.
It's not my place to be in. No. This is your job and, and I'm, I'm out of it. But I did say that I would help get the documents and all of that stuff up and ready so that they're public facing.
And you're fine with that.
I'm fine with that. Absolutely. I don't need to be, it's not my place to be in, in, in the role, what you do.
And similar to last time, there's going to be a staff interview panel and a community interview panel. So there'll be a selection process for the staff. And then each of us will select two people, either from our district or at large, to represent the community after we pass the procedure.
So probably my last piece of it will be working with principals and other staff to select the, the, I think it's 24 total staff members that'll be on that interview panel. I'll work to get those communicated and selected. And then we'll, you and Dr. Kidd will take over from there with it, from that. You all will develop the questions, the interview questions with Dr. Kidd.
So there's a couple of things during the transfer from the previous super to you. And I don't know if, I, I would hope that you have some stuff together that you're going to present to that new person. And maybe walk through the schools with that new person. I'm really hoping that you're going to be part of that onboarding process. Was that your plan?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I've already started a document with different things. I have all of my files. I'm cleaning those up to be ready to transition them. We have different things that we've talked about that we want. I mean, ultimately, that person will also need to say, this is what I'd like to do. I'm open to supporting them in whatever ways they would like. If we can get them into schools, that would be fantastic. Whether that's with me, because again, it might be a little awkward with me, but, or it might be with one of you all.
That would be an idea, but I also want to be able to make sure we're honoring you, right? And getting a good handoff to the next, and are the next person as well. I don't think we did that well last time. And I don't think your first day was all that great. Hopefully the new superintendent will have their HR person.
It is my goal, both personally and professionally, to not have them feel the way I felt when I transitioned. And that's no disrespect to anybody. It was a chaotic time. It was what it was. It was COVID. But my goal is to help them and support them in whatever way, whether that's upfront with them or in behind the scenes with whatever they need. And a call that says, hey, how do I do this? And I can direct them there or to meet with them to answer whatever questions they might have. I want them to dictate what. them to answer whatever questions they might have. I want them to dictate what they'd like. And then I'll provide them with, I have a booklet that I'm working with different, like I just added in information the other night about Page County Technical Center. Who's the president? What's his email? What's his contact? What's their role? So that when they read all that, they at least have a basis. They might not remember it the first time they see it, but they can go back to it when they need to. You know, who do they call? Leanne Pettit is your contact for that. So that's what I'm trying to do. And then just different things that we're dealing with or things to be looking for. I've got a calendar of different dates that we've already set or things that they might need to adjust or change or make.
Yeah. One thing I did learn this week is kind of outside this, but I think Northern Drummond is going to start a new facility in Waynesboro, maybe, or around Waynesboro. And we need to make sure that we're getting connected, Mr. Pitts, with that group. And I learned it from my, actually, it's my ministry mentor during major. I've asked for some information that I can get, but I think that's a great opportunity for some of our folks.
And anytime, if you all want to see what I'm leaving, you're welcome to take a look at what's being left. But my goal, again, is to make it seamless for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to action items. Ms. Jeffries, procurement plan for school food authorities.
Good evening, members of the board. I was just hoping that you guys would approve the procurement plan that I presented last board meeting. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
Make a motion that we approve the procurement plan, child nutrition program as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Overfelt and a second by Ms. Alger to approve the procurement plan for school food authorities.
Yes.
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 And if I may, at the last meeting, I grossly overestimated a number, and I need to clarify that and own my mistake. So when asked about summer feeding, we actually did 71,395 meals last summer. So I wanted to own again that miss number to you and tell you that that averaged about 463 children a week, which allows us a large room for growth as we come into this summer. And again, I apologize for that mistake, but I wanted to make sure that publicly I addressed and corrected that number.
We appreciate that. We all make mistakes.
That number's still very impressive.
That's a lot of news.
Thank you.
Lot of food out there.
Ms. Seacrest, claims for payment.
Yes. Good evening again, board members. You have been provided with a claim certification where the Fund One operating is $240,085.89. Fund Five Food Service, $69,153.79. Total expenditures, $309,239.68. Along with that, you have the list of claims as well as the check registers. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Motion, we approve the claim.
Second. A motion by Ms. Alger and a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the claims for payment as presented.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Ms. Seacrest, POs over 10 thousand.
Yes, we have three POs for your consideration this evening. The first is for additional iPads and licenses using technology money. The next is for early career teachers and three instructional coaches at James Massey University using Title II funds. And the last is Spire teacher sets using all-in funding. And if you have any questions, I'm sure myself and/or the team will do our best to answer those.
So who gets the iPads?
Youngest learners.
Youngest ones. So Chromebooks go to who? I'm just confused because I've never seen the iPad, I guess.
Three of us.
Got you. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the PO for over $10,000 as presented.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Sullivan-Smoot and a second by Mr. Overfelt to approve the PO for over $10,000 as presented.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Dr. Fox, requests to remove categorical funding.
Yes, thank you. Board members, you have a copy of the letter that we would like to send to the Board of Supervisors with our FY '26 budget requests to again remove categorical funding. So you've been provided a copy of that letter with your approval tonight before you leave. We'd like you to sign it and then we'll send it and forward it on to the Board of Supervisors.
I make a motion, we approve the letter.
Right.
The letter to request to remove categorical.
Second. A motion by Ms. Alger and a second by Ms. Sullivan-Smoot to approve the letter to request to remove categorical funding.
Yes.
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 Yes. So tonight, I just ask for your approval of the proposed budget, knowing that it will come with amendments as we explained earlier. And then we'll go to the Board of Supervisors next week to present to them.
I make a motion, we approve the budget as presented by Dr. Fox. I'll see pending approvals. I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Overfelt and a second by Mr. Painter to approve the budget as presented.
Yes.
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 Yes. Personnel A, 2006.
I make a motion, we approve Personnel A.
Right? A second. A motion by Ms. Alger and a second by Ms. Sullivan-Smoot to approve Personnel Action A. Do we have discussion?
Yes. So this Personnel A, what is that?
So it's a realignment of the Department of H, Human Resources and Business Operations to include a Director of Support Services position that would provide additional support in those two areas, primarily in the area of.
And that position, we used to have that position, right? Is that in part of the approved budget that we just approved?
No, we would use funding from what we call breakage or when someone retires. So we're not asking for new funding for this budget. This would be an FY '26 position. It's not a now. It's for next year.
For next year. So we're having a plus one in the central office.
I want to say something about this. I think, like we said before, our needs are growing higher. And the needs of one student sometimes are like the needs of three students. And as Mr. Johnson mentioned in his presentation, I mean, you know, sometimes, is it, do you hire that one teacher or do you hire, you know, a couple of assistants to meet those needs? So I think the needs on our positions are tenfold of what they were at one point. And I think that we want to improve our impact in each of our positions because the better quality we have, the better quality we have for our division, better education, and better quality of students. So I think our mission for Page County Public Schools is to support healthy and well-rounded youth. And I think that's also true for our staff and for our adults. And so we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs so that our staff can fully do their jobs for them. Sometimes it takes changing.
Picture aligned that sometimes.
And that's kind of just for me personally, it's tough that we're going to add a position up here and not add physicians that are going to affect students directly.
I think it does. I think when you add those positions, it slows down to improve the workload on our, on our staff in the building and then directs the student because their quality of work is better too, because then they feel better supported.
I can see.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes. Board member comments?
Obviously, a busy time. And thank you for what you're doing. And a lot of ups and downs with budgets and things waiting on the government and so forth. So, you know, you're to be commended for what you pulled together. And Sebastian, as always, it's great for y'all's presentations. And I know we're going to be arranging something for the, you all to present before the Board of Supervisors, because I think it's important that they see you all in action and what you all actually bring back to us. Just gives them a different perspective. And we hope to do that. So thanks again for all that you do.
Okay. Dr. Johnson, I appreciate your presentation tonight. It has a lot of good information in there that I had not seen previously. I thought it was very informative. And I know you got, there's a lot going on in your wheelhouse. So thank you for that. I too want to get one of the student reps, Sebastian, maybe you, get you in front of the Board of Supervisors. And that was reinforced today during a visit we had at the school, Luray High School. So it's important for the Board of Supervisors to get a much broader picture as to what's going on in the school, not just academically, not just in support of SOLs, but all the, all the student engagement and everything else that you guys are doing. Like when you have a club that's going down and helping elementary kids in their reading programs, or when the tech center is having a professional day at the tech center, and you got the fifth graders out there. Just, and you watch their eyes just get really, really big at all the unique stuff they get to see. So it's, I think it's really important. So I echo that comment. I wanted to ask, what is the status in our CIP meetings? I haven't heard anything about that. I know that they were supposed to be going on between Lauterbach and.
Yeah, that's the facilities committee I referenced in my update. So we were scheduled to meet Monday, but because of the day in the life event at the tech center, we've moved it. So I'm just waiting on one person to give me a final date. We sent out an email with about eight different dates, asked when everyone was available. And we have, there's two that line up. I just need this last person to give me their information. And my hope is to send out a confirmation email tomorrow. So Mr. Painter and Ms. Alger will be on that. But it looks like it's one of those, either the Wednesday or the Friday at 10:00 AM, the last, towards the last couple of dates that we have on that. But as soon as I hear back, I'll let you know. So that will be happening before spring break.
Okay. So Mr. Lauterbach, the Board of Supervisor for District Two, and I visited Luray High School today and Luray Elementary School today. And we also took a run over to Laurel College to watch the career day. And, yeah, it was, it was a great day, I think, not only for me. I learned more things. But it opened, I think it opened Mr. Lauterbach's eyes to a lot of our issues. And we didn't talk about infrastructure. We didn't talk about building maintenance. We concentrated on the human element, the kids, the educational requirements from the state, the SOLs, our teacher ratios, teacher qualifications, class ratio, a lot of things. But what we took away from that is, Mr. Lauterbach would like to see other board members, and maybe our board members, take your board member in hand and take them to some of the schools. Because without them walking through the schools, they miss, they see the, they see the slides. They see the pictures of the buildings and they're deteriorating in certain states. But they don't see the inside. They miss the human interest story. And I think it really would be helpful to get more of them inside. Mr. Lauterbach also recognizes that the state requirements are just becoming untenable. And we tried to, we were trying to brief a little bit on the reading program, and that got out of hand. And, you know, because I couldn't brief it. And it's just a difficult thing to, you can't brief it in 15 minutes. You need two or three days to really understand how it's going to grow. And then right on its heels, we've got the math program that's going to come in. So there's so much we've got to get ready for. And he would like to get, pardon my voice, that, he'd like to get Delegate Gilbert and Senator Obenchain to come down and get them inside the schools, not just drive by and look at the schools, but go inside and do the same thing we did today. Talk to some teachers, look at the classrooms. Maybe, no, I don't know if they want to watch. We'll see. But, you know, just to get in there and talk to folks. But it was, I think it was a very well, time well spent. And I would encourage us all to do, do more of that. So my thanks to Mr. Lauterbach for coming today. And my thanks to Ms. Clark. She did a fantastic job representing the division and her high school. And Ms. Comer as well. She is spot on. They know their schools. They know their kids. They're loved. They're well-respected. And we are lucky to have them. So other than that, I just want to say that I think our process, we're selecting our new superintendent, while painful we have to, is well-planned and is designated to be executed with great success. And a lot of it is because of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's all there.
I'm just going to give today encouragement for everyone to keep working hard on every level, students included. I think we're in that time where the snow is over, hopefully.
It's jinxed. It's going to be 30 degrees tomorrow night.
Yeah, no, in 93, there was a blizzard this time of year. I was born in it. Yeah, it's it. I came in with a horse. Anyway, so I think we're in a time where, you know, session's about to begin. We've been playing catch-up. It's been very intense. I've been in the school and working with some of the kids. And I can see, as the testing started to come in, the anxiety that are increasing and the stress, and I know that's true certainly for our staff and instructors as well. So I just encourage everyone to keep working hard and we'll get through it. And, yeah, to echo, I think our administrators, teachers are doing an amazing job in handling these stresses that sometimes are unprecedented. So it's trying times.
Appreciate the blizzard in the 93. Gosh.
Sebastian, thank you. He's younger. Seriously, thanks for all that you guys do. I mean, we do see it, the staff, the day-to-day, directly working in the classrooms. I want you to know that you are praised and that you are appreciated and that it doesn't go unnoticed. And so thank you all. And spring break's around the corner. You're right up there almost there for a little break.
Let's go to the safety brief. That date again, April, May 10, April 4 to 8, $30 a person.
It's a state, though.
Yeah, the state is great. It's very good. So I encourage everybody to get it. So some time ago, I think, it might have been a couple of months ago, six months maybe, I don't remember the physician that we got, but it's someone that's, it's not in our schools, but they maybe, their psychologist or what? Do we have that physician that's still?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have school psychs through vendor services.
Through vendor services. So we didn't hire someone that was down.
We do. We have one in Louisiana.
Louisiana, okay, yes. So when we approved that, and that's, that was significant money, I think. And we approved that. I asked for kind of an update on what's going on with that, you know, kind of how that position works with the number of cases that they're looking at or referrals or however that was. And I've never seen anything on that. So I'd like to request that again. And it just goes to my point earlier in that vote earlier. The more we take and put money in things that aren't directly related to our students, we're heading in the wrong direction. When I say, you know, they make you serve your students, but they're not here. They're not seeing the people face to face. I think we make the wrong decision. I think we're going in the wrong direction. We do these kind of things. And our citizens have to pay for it.
Me? Fine, closing. It's been a long day. Actually, it's been a long week. No, I mean, it's been another good meeting. We, I think, do a ton with very little. And we keep, we keep doing it. Sometimes it's hard because we have to make tough decisions. But I think we're making the decisions that we make in the best interest of our kids and our staff and just.
Yes. Thank you. 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 Yes. Thank you.